We have a motion from Councilmember Coffey. We have a second from Councilmember Cork. Is there any discussion? None, and did I need to pull something off the agenda this evening? We're looking for one item. And that was the contract? Okay, so the discussion I need to add, there's some work that still needs to be done. Item number 14A, the resolution for the historic museum bathroom window repair. And so that's been asked to be pulled off. If there's no objection. Well, let me have a motion to approve pulling that off the agenda. Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Korski, a second from Councilmember Coffey. All in favor of removing item 14A from the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item 14A is removed. We still have a motion on the table to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor of approving the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Agenda is approved as amended. Tough getting to the first part of this. We have several presentations tonight. These ought to be nice. We're looking very much forward to Ms. Lyndon Latman from the Department of Natural Resources with our Tree City USA Award. Ann, welcome you to the podium. We're excited about this.
Thank you Mayor Corks and councilmembers for having me here tonight. My name is Lyndon Latman. I'm the Urban and Community Forestry Program Manager at Washington Department of Natural Resources. Now, program is made possible in partnership with the U.S. Forest Service. We're just a small program, but we help, but we provide technical, educational, and financial assistance to Washington cities and counties, tribal governments, educational institutions, and nonprofits. The goal to help communities grow healthy, safe, resilient urban forests that provide a multitude of economic, environmental, and social benefits. So, the Tree City USA program provides that framework by which communities can start building these resilient programs. And there are four core standards that must be met in order for a city to get, receive that designation. The four core standards are maintaining a tree board or a department. Number two is having a community tree ordinance. Number three is two dollars per capita spent on tree planting, maintenance, care, that kind of thing, and education. And then proclaiming and celebrating Arbor Day. That's the fun one. But what DuPont has gone well above those standards. They are actually proactively managing their trees. And that's pretty amazing, because a lot of cities stop at those core standards. But DuPont, from my understanding, this is, I'm going to repeat what I've heard, because I think it's really impressive. So, if you want to manage a resource, what's the first thing you do? You do an inventory, right? So, DuPont has inventoried over 7,000 trees, and over half of those are street trees. They didn't stop there. Then they put together a proactive management program. I heard you alluding to maybe some alternatives for tree removals because of sidewalk interference. And definitely you have an amazing resource coming into town, and it's so welcoming of the community to have that tree-lined streets. It's, and so you're looking at alternatives, whether it's sidewalk lifting or root pruning, to keep those trees in place. That's really great. Your Public Works Board, it has maintained trees. Mr. Lim told me that this year alone, 4,000 street trees were pruned. That keeps your trucks from having broken news, keeps the streets clear, keeps people from getting their eyes poke. That's a really great thing for your public works to do. And you have some amazing volunteers. I am told that over 400 trees are now planted in your city nursery by your amazing volunteer tree board. And I think there's some people here, and I think they should be recognized. So, if everybody raises their hand that is on the tree board. So, DuPont has made an investment in your trees. An investment that, that shows that this community cares what it looks like, how it presents itself. And that is an economic benefit that trees can provide, a welcoming community that invites their people, visitors and their community members. For that, for achieving those core minimum standards, and for going well beyond that for the proactive management that you do, I would like to recognize you with your eighth Tree City USA Award and present the mayor with the aye.
Mike.
Make sure we put it correctly. There you go.
Kyle wants to get up here too. I'll tell you what, we are a hard tree board. This city had had the current tree board 20 years ago, we wouldn't have this.
It's $17.
Yeah, we wouldn't have to do this.
Say trees.
We do love our trees, and we're going to have to give Kyle a tour of the neighborwoods.
That'd be great, yeah. And Mary Werner has invited me to the first of his hours.
Yes.
With the moon tree.
With the moon tree. We'll talk about moon trees.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gary, we should have had you stand up there for that too, because your suggestion is going to save a lot of those trees.
I hope it does.
Okay, all right. So, speaking of trees, next on the agenda is the Center Drive Medium Planting Volunteer Event, which I'll turn it over to Public Works Director Gus Lim.
Hi, good evening. I have four slides here for you. Essentially aggregated some of the pictures that we took in the, the next project that the tree board has taken on, which is essentially replanting the center drive medium for the places where things have either dead or have been dead or dying. This first set of pictures is the first phase, which is, we had to remove some of the dead or dying trees in there. And this, just to give you a scale of what was there before, and also the traffic control. The next two slides are the, some of the volunteer events. I think you might notice, remember, or know some of these people. This is Kyle right here, Mr. Coffey, and we have members from the Lions Club who volunteered. We did have a Boy Scout troop that volunteered, as well as Pioneer Middle School, as well as tree board members. There's Mary Werner, another tree board member. I want to say this half is the Pioneer Middle School, and this half is the Boy Scouts. They came in, helped with the tree planting. There was over 85 trees that was installed, essentially between Hamilton and through DuPont-Stilcom Road. So, this started off on one Sunday. We prepared the ground by essentially putting holes in where the things would be, where the trees would be spotted, and then the volunteers helped with actually backfilling, putting the trees back in.
I believe that's our own Councilmember Eastep up there in the upper right corner.
Yes, Councilmember Eastep. Councilmember Eastep had a drone that was flown over there. The, but the resolution of those pictures was pretty high, so it wasn't working out too well. It was like half a gigabyte for like 30 seconds worth of video, but it was, it was pretty cool when you could see it. This is another picture of the volunteer event. This was specifically a Boy Scout troop and shot this picture only because there's our city administrator right there. And then this is another shot of it. After the volunteer event, as we got closer to DuPont-Stilcom Road, I essentially wanted to make sure that it'd be more of a city staff that did it, just only because of the traffic associated with being closer to DuPont-Stilcom Road. So, this was a, a, one shot of it as it showed. Yes, the trees are looking a little thin in this picture, but it was trying to get a long view from there. And the, the future, the next, the next events that will happen for the Center Drive Medium project is we've got to receive about 700 understory plantings. That's over at the tree nursery. So, the next step will then be scheduling the planting of those. They'll be in probably a late spring timeframe, and it'll be another volunteer event, as well as some other staff, and putting some of the other plantings in as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Council on questions? Great event between the tree board, the public works, and all the volunteers. Thank you very much. We're excited to see us continuing to renew and refresh our urban forests. So, that's, that's great news. Next on the agenda is listed as introduction to the Copperleaf Draft MOU. And I know the council's been reading up on this, and you're aware of it. For those of you present and those in the television audience, just, just a quick bit of information. Copperleaf is a development company out of California that is engaged in potential purchase of the 262 acres of commercial property available around the home course. And they are in negotiations with the city, with the current ownership, the California Teachers Returnment Association. And we're including the Nisqually Tribe in this, because they have some both cultural interests and they have land out in the area. And the idea of the MOU is this is a first step towards what could be a development. I say could be, because until at the end of the day, they're in a permitting stage, the building, it's not done. But this is the first of several steps it takes to where development could take place. City Attorney Cork.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here for you again. Mayor's presentation just cut down our minds substantially, so I won't do good for that. No, it's good. Really, this MOU that you have before you is a draft. It is still being deliberated on and looked at. We're giving it to you very early, because of your next workshop, the intent is you're going to have Copperleaf, their representatives come in and talk with you about this. But I have to basically explain that the MOU, as the mayor quickly pointed out, is really just a first step. It is, we're trying to come to an agreement as to what the discussion items will be if development takes place, and what sort of development agreement we will have with them in the future. The MOU is not a binding contract in the sense of an actual contract, rather it's an agreement about what the deal point's going to be for the future development agreement, development talks, which are not some copper leaf. Just so we're clear, the MOU is not a development agreement. It is designed to provide some level of comfort and surety to both parties, so that we know at least what the discussion about the development agreement is going to be before we get into it. And what I would urge you to, rather than asking questions about it now, please contact any relevant staff members about any question you have. Myself, Director Wilson, City Administrator Danik are all happy to answer whatever questions you have about the MOU between now and the workshop. And then, as I said, we'll have an opportunity for you to ask any questions you want of staff, as well as develop themselves at that workshop. And then the last thing I'll just note is that if there's something specific in the MOU that you have a question about, please just remember that while this is still in flux, we can still negotiate a different MOU. The MOU is not, and I can't stress this enough, is not the same thing as a development agreement. It does not bind us in some legal way to, to do anything other than to agree. This is what we're going to talk about in the future if development moves forward. So, while I know you'll have questions and concerns, please put this in the proper framework of this is the beginning of a development project, not, not anything that is going to, you know, make the city bound to anything at this stage. We're way early in the process for that. I'll leave it at that. If you have any questions, again, please feel free to contact any of the appropriate staff, and we'll provide all the information that you need. We want to make sure you have plenty of time to look over this, think about it, and have your questions asked before you go to the workshop. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gordon. Yeah, let me just reemphasize that. Since we have two major elements on the workshop next week, if you have specific questions, provide them to city administrator, myself, city attorney, the planning director, the staff will be better prepared to address those for you next week. And we're going to have Mr. Decelfson here next week. So, you'll also get to hear from the representative of Copperleaf, their vision for the development. Next item, get back into the trees, is proclamation on Arbor Day. Proclamation, National Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas 2017 is the 145th anniversary of Arbor Day, which is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, glean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Michael P. Corks, Mayor of the City of DuPont, do hereby proclaim April 28, 2017, as the 145th anniversary celebration of Arbor Day. And the City of DuPont urges all citizens to celebrate and support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands, and to support our city's community forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the hearts, and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Signed this 11th day of April 2017, Michael P. Corks, Mayor. Having a very tree-oriented meeting tonight. And we are at our first opportunity for public comments. The rules are, if you have a comment you would like to make on anything on or off the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to no more than three minutes.
Hello, Mary Allen, 2603 MacArthur. I'm going to make another suggestion. Number one, maybe number two will go good too. It's the, since they put in metering on freeway, when you come home at night, people are blocking intersections, trying to get into town. You have like traffic tie up this road jam, you know, nobody's moving, and it needs to be marked, so that it says what the fine is, and don't block, you know, don't block the intersection. I would think it would be something, it could be enforced, and it well marked. You've got to incentivize or whatever here. I don't know who does that, if the city does it, or if some, some other entity, but that needs to be done. And then, the other thing is, like the houses that are still yet to be built, probably sprinkle the porch, because the last couple of vital fires, we haven't had good luck putting them out, you know? And that's, it's like gasoline hanging on a house. When it starts, it's going. So, have changed the building code on newer homes.
David Carter, 2702 MacArthur Street. From the previous police chief applications, the ideal candidate for this vital opportunity would hold a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, public administration, or related field. Graduation from the Cascade Center, FBI National Academy, Northwestern University, or similar law enforcement leadership institution would be preferred. And then it goes on to a bunch of other stuff. An internal investigation found DuPont Police Officer Holt to be untruthful. December 21, 2012, DuPont Police Department demoted Sergeant Holt to Officer. July 2013, surrounding police departments started contacting DuPont Police concerning a mixture of personal and professional concerns about Larry Holt, with a theme that revolved around his integrity. There was a list created. I also wish to be added to the list for those wishing for him to not back him up on calls for service. I did not have much experience working with him, but after many conversations, I feel the liability factor and the red flags are too numerous for me to ignore. Potential impeachment evidence, PI. July 12, 2013, Pierce County Prosecuting Officer, Pierce County Prosecuting Office informed Chief Bob Sheehan of potential impeachment evidence existing regarding DuPont Police Officer Larry Holt. Page two of the letter, accordingly, we are advising you that our office believes that there are findings regarding Officer Holt, our potential impeachment evidence, which must be disclosed to the defense in any case where Officer Holt is likely to be called a witness. In the closing statement, we, in so advising, we are not providing an opinion as to Officer Holt's employability as to police officer with DuPont Police Department or an agency. November 27, 2013, Pierce County Prosecuting Office informed again Chief Sheehan of a case that was impacted by potential impeachment evidence. January 2014, an arbitration hearing found that the City of DuPont Human Resource Department and the DuPont Police Department failed to properly define Police Officer Holt's untruthfulness. 2016, Officer Holt was removed from the Crime Division. You have a new chief coming up. Please have a panel of the supporting police chiefs find a candidate. Thank you.
We'd normally wait until later in the agenda to respond, but considering the seriousness of the comments just made, I, I would ask for comments from Chief Sheehan and the city attorney, Mr. Carr.
So, full disclosure for the council, as well as anyone daddies on television. In my previous work, I have extensive experience with investigating and prosecuting this contract on police officers. I used to do that for the Criminal Justice Training Commission. So, I am very familiar with this type of work. I have reviewed the IA investigation that took place against Officer Holt. Officer Holt went through a arbitration process, which is a formal legal proceeding. He was exonerated of all charges, including untruthfulness, which was really the only charge brought against him. And I personally felt the case was weak, but that's not really relevant. What is relevant is that the arbitration found that the charges were not sustainable. Additionally, as far as PI evidence goes, Brady evidence, we've already been in contact with Prosecutor Pierce County. We have provided them the information that he was exonerated. The examples of letters Mr. Bunker talked about were prior to the arbitration, prior to the exoneration. Additionally, after the arbitration was, was held, Officer Holt was reinstated as sergeant. His demotion was apologized for, and he was given back pay as a result. I also know that, and I'll let Chief Sheehan speak to this more, but I know that Chief Sheehan also spoke with chiefs from regional areas, asking them if they had concerns about Larry Holt being Chief Lunchthings, and that their answers weren't entirely positive. And finally, I also put out that Officer Holt has not conducted himself in a way that gives me any concerns. I'm aware of all of this, I was aware of it long before Mr. Bunker brought it up tonight, and it does not give me pause for concern, particularly given that he was completely exonerated, the charges against him, and the single IA that was relevant to this discussion. And then finally, let me just say that I also feel like Lieutenant Holt, for whatever he did in the past regarding those IA instances, views grow tremendously. And I think that anyone talking to you, talking to him about you will confirm that. So, that's all I have to say in response to those charges. And I believe Chief Sheehan has something else to say as well.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I've heard these issues before, and they have been vetted and adjudicated over and over again. I think it's ridiculous that they keep coming back up. It seems almost like an attack on one of the employees of the City of DuPont. I know that the lieutenant has been a member of this department, I think, for at least 10 years, and he's been dedicated and loyal to the city during that time period. Since the four years I've been here, he's been an outstanding employee for me. He has done everything I've asked him to do and more, and I appreciate that very much. In the last year plus, he's been a lieutenant. We went through this process, vetted him through that, the lieutenant process, promoted him. He's been outstanding, and he's, he's been, I mentor him over the last year very closely. I'm, I am proud that he's been selected as the next chief of the City of DuPont. And I've talked to many police chiefs who are part of the Pierce County Chiefs and Sheriff's Association, and they support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Let me just add my own piece into this. It's been over a year process to nominate Lieutenant Larry Holt to be Chief Bob Sheehan's replacement. From my part, being aware of the previous information and the course that it took, I've had two personal conversations with the Pierce County Prosecutor, and in each case, he has assured me that he has every confidence in Lieutenant Holt to serve as our police chief, and he echoes what Mr. Carr has said about full exoneration and no impingement on his ability to lead the department or represent the City of DuPont. I will also add that unsolicited and unrequested, the police union approached me with a request and endorsement for Lieutenant Holt to be nominated and selected as the upcoming police chief, which I find special, that both the outgoing chief of police and the police union strongly endorsed Lieutenant Holt for that position. And so, we know that these things are out there, and as all of you in any public position know, there are always opponents to whatever, whoever is in a public position. I am confident in Lieutenant Holt, and I believe any of the past information years, the past has been adjudicated, he has been exonerated, and he will be an excellent choice to replace Chief Sheehan for the position of chief of police of DuPont. With that, are there other public comments? Go ahead, come on down. You must have lost the Rochambeau piece of this.
Troy Taylor, 3202 Hoffman Hill Boulevard. So, I have an understanding that in Stilcom, they have, during the summer, they have an open mic night for people that have really good talents, like musicians. I was wondering if maybe DuPont can start doing this in the summer, maybe have a day out each week, that musicians can show that they have, what their talents are, and just show the, the city that there are musicians out there.
I believe Forest is actually, Conduction Open Mic Night, doesn't, Carol, you probably know that, isn't that true? But we, we, we will, it's a great idea. And between some of our places like Forellis and Forests, that's certainly something we could do more of and advertise more. I hope you're not talking about having people sing at city council meetings. Okay? I just checked, that could be, have dire consequences. Thank you very much. Are there other public comments? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. The motion would be in order. We have a motion from Councilmember Coffey, a second from Councilmember Korski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Thank you. All right. Discussion items. We have one item tonight, and that is the updated presentation on advanced life support. Counsel, I know you've seen an email I sent you, and this week is one of three for touches on ALS. I know all of you have a copy of the very detailed task force findings from advanced life support. We just want to give you this update on what's been ongoing and some of the updated information. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so this is the purpose and action we're going to be doing, give the council and the community just an abbreviated, updated briefing, and we will update the council on the comments we've gotten from the over dozen times that it's been presented throughout the community. No action required tonight. Next week will be a detailed workshop, and we'll have numerous members of the ALS Task Force here. And so, again, if you have specific questions that you want to forward prior to that, again, we'll have, you know, detailed answers for you, and be prepared for whatever else you want to do. And then, scheduled for the 25th of April, to make a decision on whether to place this on a 1 August ballot. Next, please. Okay, next. And keep them coming. That's good. Okay, so for those of you in the audience not aware of this, Utah 911 in the City of DuPont, we have no paramedics on the DuPont Fire DuPont, we have no paramedics on the DuPont Fire Department staff. Any paramedics we get will come from a private company. They're not required to show up. It's a for-profit operation. You'll see later what we're doing as far as showing up numbers. They're very professional. We have no problems with the quality of their service. It's just a question of availability. And when they do come, it takes on average over 15 minutes, where the DuPont Fire Department is running about five minutes. Next slide. In just highlight tonight, what is the difference in advanced life support, basic life support? What's your current state in the city? How we've gone through this process to engage the community, the task force itself, what the costs are going to be, recommendations? Then again, questions, discussion, input, community feedback, and what the ballot process would look like if you're going to make a one August ballot measure. Next, please.
Okay, so on this slide, you can see we have two columns that kind of go over some of the different conditions of why you might call for the fire department, paramedics to come to your house. Under the ALS, we kind of refer to these as items that you need to go to the emergency room for right away. The BLS are the things that we kind of, we consider these things that you could maybe go to a walk-in clinic for, maybe wait to go see your doctor, but you just want to maybe address them right now instead of waiting. There's a distinct difference for us when we start talking about vital signs, what your vital signs are, when ALS kicks in for us. Just real quickly, some of the things that you might see, the chest pain, breathing difficulty, signs of stroke, abnormal vital signs, main team. Medical reaction, allergic reaction on this one, anaphylaxis, when somebody, maybe we're looking at with the kids who get stung by a bee and they have a major reaction as opposed to just breaking out a little bit of hives. You might have somebody who has, their throat starts to swell, they need oxygen, maybe they need an advanced airway replaced. But the main difference here, like I said, is just the, I need to go to the emergency room right now versus I can wait, go to a walk-in clinic, or see my doctor. I think it's a pretty comprehensive list, which kind of gives you a little bit of example. If you move on to the next slide, we look a little bit at what our ALS availability is. You can see a whole lot of numbers here to sum it up. It's basically showing what our call volume is. To fill in a little bit, as of March of this year, our calls were up to 56 EMS calls. The availability of an ALS unit, one of those private ambulance companies, is running approximately at 25% of the time. Early on in the year, we were down around 15%. Here recently, it's picked up just a little bit. The main thing to take away from this is, over the last couple of years, the private ambulance companies have decreased their availability. The number of cars that have been available was around five or six called cars that were available for us. Currently, we're down to about one car. Recently, I spoke with one of the personnel from the private ambulance companies that comes to DuPont, and I asked him, tried to get a little bit of insight of what was going on. And basically, what he told me was, if you have an event in DuPont, you want to have it on a Sunday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, because that's when they're available. Outside of those three days, it's really a coin flip. Some of the other numbers on here, you can see that it takes about 15 minutes for the ALS unit to arrive here at DuPont, as opposed to when you call your 911, the DuPont Fire Department's going to show up at your house in about five minutes, depending on where you live in the city. So you have a pretty big difference. If we had paramedics working here in DuPont, then they'd ride with that. They'd be dispatched at the same time and arrive at the same time, so about five minutes. And as you can see, just looking at those numbers, really nothing is improving. This is going to be a problem that's just going to continue to progress. Again, speaking with the personnel from the private ambulance companies, they don't see a solution. They're really telling us that we've got to find a way to figure it out on our own. The other key thing of this is when we do get an ALS call, they're not required to respond to DuPont. There may be an ALS unit out there, but they can be tied up through an air facility transport from hospital to hospital. So just because there's a crew on duty doesn't mean they're going to necessarily respond to DuPont. So I think those are important numbers to just kind of take in and evaluate, so hopefully it helps out a little bit.
One thing before we move on, look at the far right column. That's as of March, that's averaging January, February, and March. The numbers John had were averaging January and February. So we had a little improvement in March, but the improvement was only minor. That's why there was a little bit of an increase to that availability rate. Okay, just going to go over a little bit where we're in the process. Remember, last year, we had a community kickoff. We invited members of the community in. We just talked about the process. Assembled the task force, which you have a copy of the report for. The report is available at the city website. It's been widely disseminated. It goes into great detail. They did their important findings. We've had a lot of community meetings. This really isn't one of them, but we've been to village meetings, we've been to Patriots Landing, we've been to the Moms Club, any group that will have us, we'll talk to them. And on approval of the council, the end of this month, to move this to a ballot measure, there will start a further deliberate effort on education for the months of May, June, and July. This month, bringing in to you, the council, for your input and action. If it's placed on the ballot, it takes a greater than 60% to pass. That's the requirement. Revenues would start in 2018, on January, and the goal would be to, no later than one January of 2019, have a certified, manned, trained, fire department capable of providing ALS to the citizens of DuPont. And if we get a yes vote in August, that entire time from August to when January would be development of and approval of the training and manning plan that will go into effect as soon as we start getting the funding for it. Next slide, please. I'm not going to go into all this detail. This is in your task force, but what this shows is all of the different potential methods to achieve ALS in the City of DuPont. And you know, you've heard me talk about it before, those that were not feasible or illegal for whatever reason, just based on who we are, where we are, were discounted, they were all worked through, and then there was a process of selection between several of them. Next slide, please. So again, anything infeasible was eliminated, and it really came down to three opportunities. They did look at a public contract with West Pierce, and that, for geographic reasons, proved to not be pursued. So ended up three feasible ways that the City of DuPont could achieve an ALS capability in the near future. Private contract, having it provided by DuPont Fire Department, or annexation into West Pierce. Those are the three that were pursued in detail and produced all the costing data that you'll see later. Next slide, please. And we looked at the different options, and I'll talk about the ones that the task force brought. The private contract would give us a two-person crew every day in advanced life support ambulances. One would be in the City of DuPont. The other one would have to be within 10 minutes, 90% of the time. The reason that is that they have to provide basically their own mutual aid, because they couldn't provide the same mutual service to another each, because they're not trained in fire suppression. The annual cost was 1.2 million from one provider, and the other was 1.4 million. Each had a 5% increase each year. The DuPont Fire Department still provide basic life support, we'd still do that. And that bottom is really, I think I really have to point out, there's no fire rescue operations from a private paramedic. They could go into an immediately dangerous health and to life environment. That includes an auto notification where they would need to be in a level of protection if a patient needed an IV, an airway, or some type of advanced life support intervention. They could enter that. They could enter into a CO environment, they could enter into a fire or be involved in a rescue until the rescue is complete. So basically, someone in protective gear would have to bring the patient to the paramedic.
So when we looked at the option of having DuPont provide ALS, there was really two models that we looked at. One was a five-person response, and the second was a four-person response. And we tried to weigh the pros and cons of each. With the five-person response, we really focused on the fact that it would provide a significant improvement in patient care, provide a higher level of safety for firefighters as far as being taken to, out scene control, just being able to provide the appropriate level of care for the patient. The main thing would be on a cardiac call. It's amazing how quickly people can get used up on a cardiac call. So for example, if we arrive and we're going to be doing CPR on somebody, you're going to immediately have two people taking turns doing chest compressions, sometimes three if you're on scene for a long time. You're going to have somebody who's in control of the scene, managing that scene, collecting patient information. You have one to two paramedics establishing an advanced airway, getting an IV in place, administering medications, and then just moving a patient. We recently had a call where if we had not had the number of people that we have, or if we had a mutual aid show up, we would have had some significant challenges of being able to get that patient out of home. And even with the people that we had, we still had an injury just from the challenge of moving this patient. So personnel get used up very quickly on an advanced call, a high-level call. We did acknowledge that there was an increase in price going from a five-person to a four-person, but when you weigh the pros and cons, we really felt like it was worth that little extra. So kind of the bang for the buck type thing. We know that that's, the finance has to be considered, and there is a cost that comes with it, but we really feel like it's worth it. Yes, we can make it worth a four-person, but five just gives us a higher capacity. One of the big things to point out here with five people is, if we have a patient that we do a transport on, we send two of our personnel out of the city on that transport. With five, we still have three back in the city to be able to respond to that next call. With four, it drops us down to two. Some calls, that's okay, but if we had another high-level call, another say CPR, and we only have two people left in the city, it's going to be a challenging call for us to be able to provide the type of care that we need to. So having that fifth person, there's some significant pay value to that. So the task force recommendation was the five-person response.
The other option, look, that was annexing into West Pierce, great fire department, great events services, they are full-service fire department that operate specialty teams. That would put, basically, the City of DuPont wouldn't have the fire department, we'd be part of West Pierce. We'd be governed by the elected commissioners of that agency. It was a lot more expensive. The district levy would be $3.33 per $1,000. Some of the services that they provided that we, if we remained our own agency, we could pay as you know, we could activate those teams and be billed for it. If you do look at West Pierce's website, their tax rate will be a little bit higher than, because they have some operational levies that we would be obligated to pay. Okay, I get all the fun parts here. This is a very updated slide. This includes the impact on all of us from the ST3 vote. $1 of property tax, it's levied on your property. Here's the distribution of where it goes. You see, it really comes down to the DuPont EMS levy generating 4 cents out of that dollar, and the regular levy for the City of DuPont is 10 cents. Majority of your dollar in tax revenues goes elsewhere. You can see where those all are. The new ST3 pieces, 2 cents of that dollar sum. That's where they go. And again, if the state passes a new budget and redoes the property taxes, and of course, we'll update that, we think there'll be some reduction in our property taxes depending on which option is selected, but don't know that right now, this is current information. Next slide, please. So what does that look like? Today, the city portion of your property tax, here is where DuPont lays out against all the cities in Pierce County. We are tied for the lowest. And just as a note in there, the city makes up several hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund for EMS costs every year. So the EMS levy does not cover the cost of providing EMS services to the city. But that's within that, so right now, your city's piece of property tax is tied for the lowest in our county. Next slide, please. So if we add the EMS levy to that, we are the lowest for what the city gets of your property tax dollar or your property tax rate. You can see that, how we play out against the other municipalities in the county. Next slide, please. The total package, because that's really what it comes down to. This adds all of those other things into it. We're second lowest. Gig Harbor remains the lowest in the county, and you can just see where we stack out against all of the other cities. Next slide. Okay, so today, to provide the level of EMS that we currently have, BLS, it costs us just short of a million dollars. And it's a roughly $300,000 a year shortfall that the general fund makes up. If we were to annex into a fire district, the citizens make that up, not the city. So the city would not be transferring that $300,000 out of the general fund. That would all be borne by the residents. Here's how that breaks down to DuPont Fire Department providing it. That four-person response at 1.12 million, 12-person response at 1.45 million. And you see the private contract over to the side, the least expensive model was 1.2. At the fifth year, it's 1.586 with that built-in 5% escalator, which we expect is more than whatever any attribute growth could be within our own. It's just a built-in profit escalator they've got. Next slide. You can look at this at whatever detail you want. What is that cost above the current EMS levy directly related? You can see the, really, several options, the DuPont Fire Department, four-person, five-person, annexing, and then private contract year one through year five, your levy cost, and then buy home value. So you can see that annual cost, take a $300,000 home. The recommendation from the task force is the five-person response, that would cost a homeowner in the City of DuPont with a home priced at $300,000, $306.34 annually. And you can see the annexation would be almost $850. You see what happens with the private contract. And you go down, what does that look like monthly? That again breaks it down one month. The recommended five-person response is $25.53 for a $300,000 home. And you can add that up however you want to look at your own, the numbers there to allow you to do that. Next slide, please. Okay, so where does that place us? If we were to pursue the five-person response for the city's portion of it, we would go from the lowest to the third lowest. We'd go from $1.72 to $2.74. Increase is a dollar or two. So that's where we would sit relating to the city portion of the property tax. Next slide. Total cost, everything added in, we would go from the second lowest in the county to the second lowest in the county. The increase would not be enough to bring us to past five. So that's how it lays out. You can see where we would fit in comparatively to the other communities within our county. Next slide. Right, so just to give a brief overview of what we talked about, ALS was determined to need to happen in DuPont as soon as possible, and the recommendation was the five-person minimum crew is the reason that we outlined by firefighter operators earlier. And you can see the cost, $1.2 additional in money. We did acknowledge that the four-person would be adequate, but it's a lesser service, a greater risk to the second response for them to save. And the private contract didn't have enough added value, because it had a two-person crew, we would still have to do BLS. There's no extra benefit of having them pool-trained. The cost climbs 5% every year. Okay, so here is what we asked when we did these community briefings, you know, right off the bat, did you know that DuPont does not have dedicated paramedics? Most people were surprised to learn that, as I guess I would have been if I'd not been involved in this. People seem to understand the difference. People seemed to understand the downstream basic life support and advanced life support, we tried to explain that, you know, whatever detail they needed. And then we just asked them, do you think we need ALS? And overwhelmingly, people said yes, we need to have ALS. And, you know, my question was, do you agree with the recommendation of the task force? And again, overwhelmingly, the answer was yes. I think some of you have sat in on some of these meetings and have heard the responses. I think if we go forward, I would encourage you to join, join us in other opportunities we have to present it. Did they agree with the small jumping cost from the four-person to the five-person? Said yes, it does. Particularly when you look at what it does to us, our total capacity to then provide a second response and to have a more robust fire response, there's just good value for a dollar within. And overwhelmingly, people said they would support a levy. Now granted, I appreciate, you know, we have not talked to most citizens in DuPont, we've gone out as much as we can. And the message we asked is, what does your council need to hear? And overwhelmingly, what we heard is, we need ALS, we prefer the five-person response. And that came from as diverse groups as the Moms Club, to Patriots Landing, and then the different villages. Next slide. This is the type of feedback we got, again, just reinforces that, and some of the questions we were asked. Citizens want to make sure they get no out-of-pocket for residents, out-of-pocket costs. So as an example, if your insurance doesn't cover the full cost of it, one of our discussions is, that would be part of paying your taxes in DuPont, that you don't get charged an extra fee for the use of ALS. We were asked, why not volunteers? The requirement to have 24/7 capability, availability of reserves, the challenge we have with getting reserves, it just does not work to get the numbers and type of people with qualifications we need to run a 24/7, 365 reliable capacity. If fault does not show up, we do BLS for transport. And again, there's the co-pay piece at the bottom. And I'll let Ted talk about what the ballot process was.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, back earlier in the presentation, you saw a bunch of red hash marks, it's not censored, it's, we're still trying to gather the right data, and I don't want to put anything up until I get this confirmed to the auditor, but by the workshop, we'll have that for you. And that concerned the number of votes, yes votes, we needed to pass this if we were going to ballot. So the chart is taken from the Pierce County Auditor's website, the highlight is around the August date. That's just a suggestion based on a number of reasons, most importantly is, we need kind of a decision on this because the regular levy also comes up, so we need to decide on that. By May 12th, you have to have the resolution, that's your action. The cover sheet, we would do that, it's just very similar to what we have in our package, an explanatory statement, and that is a 200-word or less explanation that would go in the voter guide. And then the, I forgot to tell you inside, the resolution is the ballot title, that's required to be written by the city attorney. And then also, for and against committee appointments will be formed. So how it would work for us is, we're going to continue this process, the workshop, public hearing, and then a vote on the 25th, you'll decide if it goes in the ballot or not. If it does, then we would advertise for a for and against committee. By law, there can be no more than three. On the May 8th night, we would present any names we got for your action to name those to the county, we'd submit that whole package by the 12th of May. The city does not do the for and against statements, and nor does it participate in rebuttal. We name, you name the committees, they take the action. And that's, and then just again, to reiterate, to pass a levy or a bond out of a general election, you need 40% turnout of the last general election. So we'll look at who voted in November for the last presidential election, and 40% of that is what the turnout has to be, and you need 60% because it is a new levy. After it's established, it goes to 50%. There's another way to do it, it's complicated, it's hard to explain, but we'll talk about the workshop. Thanks.
Next. Okay, I prefer not to get into a detailed discussion this evening because we have a workshop next week, and if you have specific technical questions, you know, certainly we'll field them at the workshop, but if you want to afford it ahead of time, I can ensure that we have, you know, as complete an answer, well researched as you would want for that. So with that in mind, is there anything quick you want to ask?
A quick question, who will be in president of the workshop? Will Chief Creekmar and John be there as well as task force members if we have questions?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, they were part of the task force.
Oh.
Yeah, we had intern, and I think Mr. Chase, he planned to be there, right? He was a member. You know, Mike Oenler was participating as a public finance, and I've asked him if he would be available to attend, and we've asked the other members if they can attend.
Yeah, Chief Jensen.
Chief Jensen will be here. He was chair of committee. Nate Jean, who's a paramedic in Pierce County, cannot attend because of work commitment. Okay. Well, yeah, we want to give you every opportunity to, you know, explore this to whatever depth we feel necessary. Any other quick questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next up is my report, I just have a few items. I just want to thank Public Works and Public Safety for their excellent response during the wind event we had last weekend. As everybody knows, we had several trees go down, debris get blown about, and I would give kudos, both the city administrator and the public works director were out of town that day, and as we've, you know, tried very hard, yeah, he was off doing whatever, he probably knew the weather enough. But number two stood up, I really enjoyed watching Scott and Chris work as a team and get on it, and Public Safety, Police, and Fire tied very closely to Public Works, so great work. I even discovered the tree on Heath Court, we got it removed before my parents knew they were blocked in their neighborhood. So that's a real plus, when the mayor's mother doesn't have to call in, I always appreciate that. I just want to pass on one item, and council, I appreciate all of you for this, I had the privilege of attending the master builders of Pierce County luncheon event last Thursday in Puyallup. We had three speakers, the Puget Sound Regional Council CEO, a economist from Windermere, and the county executive. And they really looked at demographics trends in building and development in Pierce County. And I'll tell you, the first thing that the county executive said when he got up there is, the mission of Pierce County is not to be a low-cost housing bedroom development for King County. He said, if you want to know how to do that, go see DuPont. DuPont has the right mix of development and housing and is moving in a direction that nobody else in the county is. So council, and a lot of your actions and a lot of the initiatives you have taken, so appreciate that. We're getting attention from a lot of other places. And the gentleman I sat at lunch with ironically is a developer who is working on Tahala, and he was on the leadership team for a small company called Warehouser in the late 80s and early 90s in the development of Northwest Landing. And he has read about the awesome Super Sidewalk Soccer. Gary's probably going to want to talk to you about this, but we had a discussion about street trees and sidewalks, that was very good, and I could talk to you about that some other time. But he said, hey, what you guys are doing is absolutely revolutionary, I want to send a team down and learn from what you're doing, we can make smarter choices in the future. Bolt and tree selection, how you develop them, and how you repair damage. So there was certain irony in that, I can give you some other insights later. Something fun to let you all know about, and I want to thank the city administrator and Parks and Director, Ted and Amy have been working on developing our Memorial Day program, and today, they confirmed our speaker for Memorial Day. For those of you that have seen the Academy Award-winning movie, Hacksaw Ridge, Desmond Dos Jr., the son of the Medal of Honor recipient from that movie, will be our speaker at Memorial Day. He'll be coming in from Virginia and staying with us and doing the presentation. I think that's going to be pretty exciting, and that would be a cool thing, I'm excited about that. And again, Gary, you've heard a lot of talk about trees tonight, and I want to let you know that you came in here two years ago and kind of put a marker on the table and challenged us to do a better job.
I'm glad it worked.
It has worked.
I want to see it on YouTube, do something.
Yeah, I think it's amazing. I'm challenging Gus to get like concert tour shirts, the Super Sidewalk Tour Soccer Tour of DuPont.
There's another moneymaker, you can charge people to watch.
Absolutely. I will charge people to watch, good. Anyway, so with that, city administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really short one, just to walk you through next week's workshop, we've got the ALS discussion unbriefed, we have the introduction to the copper leaf LOU, where the developer will be here and you'll have a chance to interact, as discussed. And we are going to go over, if we have time, this may get lost, those are two big items. But third, if we can get to it, will be the staff needs and assessment, and kind of a projection of the Dallas building that's coming in this year, so we'll run through that with you. The 25th, we've got a special presentation, Go Transit, JBLM services getting set up, you'll have the hearing on ALS, the discussion, and the resolution vote. And we are going to be welcoming our first K-9 officer, Oliver, I think we've got him in a live demo, he's going to be able to mark up for training, he's going to find drugs for us, we'll simulate drugs. And then we have a couple other things to do. That's good, thanks.
Counsel reports. Counselor McCorville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last night I attended the planning commission meeting, they continue to work on DMC 25.105 sensitive areas. Currently, there's a plan to have a public hearing on May 22nd as it stands right now, so that will be the next big ticket item for that before it comes to us on the council. I also want to mention that there's a couple meetings coming up that I'll be attending next week from the Pierce County LTAC. One of them's going to be on, at the Hampton Inn here in DuPont, 3:30 PM on the 18th of April, where Pierce County has hired a firm to look at tourism within Pierce County, and there's a joint meeting between the Pierce County LTAC and the Tourism Promotion Authority on both April 18th and April 19th that I'll be attending, but on April 18th, we'll be here in DuPont. So if you're interested to find out what they've come up with for tourism in Pierce County and, you know, represent DuPont, then I invite you to go on the 18th at 3:30 at the Hampton Inn. And that's all I have.
Counselor McGess.
Thank you. I attended the Parks Agency meeting last week and wanted to remind a few people that the Bunny Breakfast and Egg Hunt is this weekend on the 14th. I don't have the specifics on the times, but I'm sure that Carol can answer any questions that we might have. I think the Egg Hunt starts at 8 o'clock, am I right?
The Bunny Breakfast is at 9, and then the Egg Hunt is after that.
That's what I meant.
Starting at 11 or noon.
Okay, so the breakfast is first, are the tickets still available or is it sold out?
I think there's still tickets available here, but you have to buy them, there are no tickets at the door.
They're not available at the door, so that's very important to know. The other thing is, they are having Parks Appreciation Day on Saturday, the 22nd, which is looking for volunteers to help clean up different areas, the parks, the medians, and just kind of make everything nice for spring and upcoming events. We are looking forward to having a new Parks Agency member, that will be in the next council meeting for approval. And lastly, we are working hard on the Parks Auction, which is set for Friday, June 16th. So it will be before Father's Day, instead of the typical time before Mother's Day, so that we can honor the dads a little bit with some special, hopefully, auction items. And the theme for that auction will be a country western theme, so we're really looking forward to planning that and putting it together. And I believe it's going to confirm that it's going to be held at the Fire Bay. Is that confirmed yet? Well, hopefully.
There's no fighting here.
Well, I think I have the deciding moment. Thanks.
Okay, we have no unfinished business. We have no new business. Now it's time for our second opportunity for public comments, the rules remain the same.
David Bummer, T702, McGarther. There are experts, and then there are local task forces, and there's finance committees, and so the experts, Citygate Associates, City of DuPont paid then experts, serving over 14.5 million residents, over 200 major projects of cities of a million or more. They created a report for the city of DuPont. They say the city of DuPont should be a combination fire department until mining operations cease. That study says the city of DuPont should contract for all medical transport. As your firefighter said, if they leave in the ambulance, your force is diminished. So keep DuPont firefighters here, have a contract for medical transport. The other issue is, you have an EMS levy until 2018. So this is a money grab, you're asking, last night's presentation, the chief said it's a dollar two. So you're asking for a dollar two on top of the 50 cents you're already charging for another year. So the suggestion is, there are other options to get ALS here. Look at the third party, the experts. There are many options. Also, if any of you make comments to the legislature, citizens ask you to comment on HB 1751, that has passed. The companion bill is in the Senate and it will pass. We have options now, the city of DuPont, the town of Stilliken can become a fire district. Also, look at what other cities have done, cities that serve their citizens. The majority of citizens went to a fire benefit district based on square footage. You're going to have a million dollars, excuse me, a million square foot going in here. Why are we charging on assessed value? The senior citizens that have Ramblers, their homes are more assessed more because there's a higher demand. Because you have a view of the mountains or the sound, you're charged more. A square footage is equal and equitable, and it will carry us through the next decade with the future development. There are so many options out there. The task force did their work, but it is biased. Please be open.
Okay, so no more public comments, counsel. Hey, you got to act like you want to talk.
Gary Allen, 26, 03, in McArthur. There's 200,000 difference between, I'm going to add you on one more firefighter, I don't understand that. And then if, for this to happen right away, why doesn't the city just fund it and do it? I've been in fire department, there wasn't here, and I've helped drive a bonding, build and a bond that passed, and the ones that passed, don't use sheer tactics, don't, you know, promise to fight this guy and stuff. If you did this for a couple of years or a year, it'd be a lot easier to pass upon, showing that, you know, what it could do, what it does do, the benefits, the reality, instead of, you know, this is what's going to happen, if it doesn't happen, then guess what, you get to sit by the street and wait for whatever go by, they get it right there. That never works, you know, and if it's, if you haven't noticed, there's five hotels here, if you ever stayed in a hotel, there's so many taxes and fees and stuff to go to the city, plus you have a million square foot thing coming in here, offices and warehouse, there's a lot of money coming in, you know, that could be used to start this thing up and then try it, because I don't think you're going to pass it the way you're doing it now. You try it with like failed tactics that don't hardly ever work and then never work in this city.
Okay, council comments. Okay, hearing none. Then we will adjourn the Tuesday, April 11 council meeting at 8:14.